Thank you and good evening. This is a news release. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Winona by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. This has been presented to the Finance Department of the City of Winona. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. The GFoa is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately seventeen thousand five hundred, five hundred government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington DC. So, once again, Mary, congratulations to you and your staff, and we appreciate all the hard work you all do. I want to thank whoever's responsible, the staff and everybody, for the Wyndham Tree lights, and I thank the lights downtown. Everything looks good, so that's greatly appreciated. We want to congratulate the Winona State University for winning the Mineral Bowl. Basketball team needs a little work, but that's another story. The men, anyway, the women are fine, but men need a little bit more work. I just want to, every Sunday morning, I kind of whip down Third Street early in the morning to see what it looks like, and this week, the area from Main to Johnson on Third was in pretty rough shape. There was a lot of glass, a lot of paper glasses and debris on the south side where the, especially around the corner there were that used to be Brothers, I don't know what it is now, but hopefully they can do a better job of cleaning up after Saturday night. Okay, Judy, got anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a comment I'd like to make the public aware of. The City of Winona is undertaking a huge redesign of its website. We are expecting that website to be up and operational starting January 1st. There have been some recent comments on the inability to access information on our current website. It's the fault of our provider, they are trying to correct it. As of early this afternoon, it had been corrected, and we were back online with appropriate connections. We hope that continues. We continue to go down on their website, on their server, which then affects our website. But we are diligently proceeding to try and get a new website up and operational no later than January 1st. So, they, everybody should be able to access everything at that point. And we apologize for the inconvenience. If there's any information that you want, you can find it on the website, you can make the connections, please feel free to call any of the departments in the city, and we will provide the information for you.
Okay, thank you. Amy, call roll, please.
Okay. Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Thurlay.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Idon.
Here.
Councilmember Borzjakowski.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
And Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
We're all here?
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Item 2.1, under the required public hearings, is the 2013 proposed property tax levy and proposed budget.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to the 2013 proposed property tax levy and proposed budget. Anyone wishing to speak to the proposed property tax levy and proposed budget? Anyone present wishing to speak to the 2013 proposed property tax levy and proposed budget? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve the proposed property tax levy and proposed budget. Second.
Okay. No, we don't need a motion. This is just...
That's right.
That's me.
It was just testing you.
Okay, Judy, do you want to say anything on this?
Just a quick comment, Mayor and Council. The budget request, the levy is requested to increase by 1.2 percent. The major issues with that increase, not issues, but the major reason for the increase is twofold. One is the debt service for the potential bike path project, and secondly, the increase in the Port Authority's budget is due to the bonds for the airport improvements, which is where the city is matching the federal funds over the next few years to redo the whole airport operation. So, those are the major reasons for the increases, both very big infrastructure projects. And if there's any questions?
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, Amy, let's move on.
All right, under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is to set the public hearing for Mikkrouf Properties' request for Bridge Street vacation between Sandbourne Street and Wabashaw Street.
Move to approve the public hearing for Monday, December 17th.
Moved by George, second by Debbie. Questions or comments, George?
Just one thing, Judy, if you could have Brian look at this and just give us some information, they're talking about if this is approved, Bridge Street would be rebuilt. Could you see if there's a, you know, have Brian look at it, if there's a need to rebuild Bridge Street, and just put that in our next, just for information for us, so...
Councilmember, we will have that as part of the information. We have looked at it, and we will provide you with the information as to why we feel it needs to be rebuilt.
Okay, fine.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all favor the motion, which is to set the public hearing date for Monday, the 17th, for the Mikkrouf request. All favor that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 3.2 is the appointment of James Kirk to the Winona Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Move to approve that appointment.
Moved by George, second by Al. Questions or comments?
I had a chance to meet with Mr. Kirk last week, and he'll be a good fit with us out there, so...
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? All favor the motion, which is to approve the appointment to the HRA. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Under new business, item 5.1, Winona State University Campus Parking Enforcement Agreement and Ordinance.
Move to approve the request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pam, questions or comments?
Just a, this will be a four-year agreement, then, right, from January 2013 to 2017?
I read so, yeah.
Page two.
This first agreement, just from my memory, I think, well, this was the first time we had done this, this first agreement that's expiring, correct? I mean, we went through that process, how many years was that opening on? Is it a couple of years that we did that? Do you remember?
At least four or five years.
Right, that, okay.
That I can recall, yeah. And this agreement is basically the same with a couple of very small changes.
So, obviously, it's working well, it was a good, it was a good move on the city's part to, that joint powers of Winona State.
Yep, it works pretty well for us, and we, we still retain a lot of the ability to go in force, too, but they primarily take care of the parking.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Comment, it's a five-year agreement. Mr. Comment?
Comments?
Five-year agreement.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the mo, comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Winona State Campus Parking Enforcement Agreement and Ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.2 is the order of the annexation request by Michael and Joe Grant.
I'll move to approve that request.
Moved by Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by George, questions or comments?
Are we approving it or introducing the ordinance?
We are.
Introducing the ordinance.
Introducing the ordinance.
Okay. Technical thing.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yep. It's a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, okay.
Okay. All right, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the resolution for the orderly annexation request by Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.3 is water service only meters.
Okay, Keith, you want to explain what this is, please?
This is the ordinance. Mayor and Council, this would be, first of all, is the introduction of the ordinance change, but what it does, it allows condominiums, townhouses, residents, as a matter of fact, that have a situation where the water just goes on the grass, that you'll be able to have a separate meter for that purpose and not pay sewer bill on that. Where, we've never done that in the past, but with the new fee structure, it better accommodates, the structure that allows to do that. And makes sense, if the water isn't going down to the sewer, now it should not be getting a sewer charge for it. We make up for that in the greater fee structure.
Okay.
This may be really obvious, but I want to make sure I've got this. So, is this by request, residents request this, or the city is just going to do it? Because I know you say later on here that if you want later, a temporary move or later return of a water meter, there is a charge, but this initial phase is our cost.
Okay. In, in almost all cases, houses have only one meter.
Right.
If they want to install a separate meter, it will most likely be in there all the time. They have the right, if they want to take out the second meter that goes just to the grass, take it out during the winter time, they can have the city come take it out, and then we charge to do that and charge to put it back in. Or they can choose to leave it in all winter if they want to, to the second meter.
Right, but I don't have a second meter, so then what?
So, then in yours, you just, you just have one meter, which pays for water and sewer.
I know, but I guess my, the way I'm reading this is that you can get another meter, is that how I'm understanding?
Correct, if you have a plumber lining up to...
Ah, okay.
With additional piping that goes on the side.
Got it, see, I have that chance, okay.
Yep, it's not free.
Al, question, does the initial second meter, and maybe this is what Councilperson White was getting at, does the city pay to install that, or is that the responsibility of the property owner?
It's always the responsibility of the property owner. We provide the meter, and there's a meter charge, but as far as installation, it's their cost.
Just like a regular single meter, there's a meter charge every month, the dual meter would have two meter, well, the account would have two meter charges.
That's correct.
And then, does this second meter require any additional time for the Finance Department to create another bill, to the Water Department to measure those meters? Is it done on the same technology that we have now, where they, they just go through the neighborhood and read the meters?
Correct, it's done on the same technology. Most, most of our meters now are radio read, as we drive by.
Just drive by, yeah.
And I, you know, initially setting them up for a house that does that, will take, you know, initial setup at the computer system, but that Finance Department is very much on board with doing that.
And, and when they're installed, is there a guarantee, or how, how does the city know for sure that the meters are going to be used for, you know, for purposes other than consumption, which would result in sewer usage?
It's, it would be have to, we do an inspection after it's installed, and have to see where the plumbing goes, basically.
All right, good. I would move to introduce the attached ordinance then.
Moved by Al, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, questions? George.
A lot of people over years have been asking for this, you know, after beautiful lawns, and they say, why are we paying the sewer tax when it doesn't go through the meter, so...
Specialist last year.
Yes, yes, so...
Dry area.
I see what Al is talking about, probably the right craftsman could...
Well, they could that in any, any circumstance, really.
Anything, right, 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 the right craftsman could...
We've had that internal discussion with, with Building Inspection Department as well, and they're fully aware of what needs to be looked for.
So, I totally support this, so...
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all favor the motion, which is to approve the water service only meters. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.4 is Prairie Island Campground and Canoe Rental Agreements.
I would move to approve the attached agreement.
Second.
Moved by Al, second by Debbie, questions, Debbie?
Just kind of curious, Keith, because now you are stating here, then, if this passes, of course, that you have a pre-council meeting later to kind of discuss this, this issue, just wondering why that wasn't done prior, instead of kind of like, right now it's December, and it ends on the, you know, 31st.
It certainly could have been and should have been. It, it got missed, and rather than, you know, have them go for a time without an agreement.
Right, yep. Which makes sense, I was just wondering if there was something else that kind of came up. Okay, right, thank you.
Okay.
The attorney said that there are two agreements here, there's one for the campground...
Oh, that's right.
And also for the canoe rental.
Right, there is.
Okay, this is the, yes...
So, include that in your motion.
Yep. Second. All right, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Prairie Island Campground and Canoe Rental Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.5 is Levy Park Cafe Building Roofing.
I'll move approve of the agreement.
Second.
Moved by Debbie, second by George, questions or comments?
Full of questions today, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
When this does get painted, do I assume that this will come out of Facilities Fund for the painting, or...
We'll take this money that is being turned back to us.
But that's a thousand dollars, right?
Right.
But it would probably be more than, I would guess, because last time it was, wasn't it?
We really don't know what it's going to cost.
Okay, but if it does, it'll come out of...
Unless we have it in park maintenance someplace, otherwise we'll do Facilities Fund.
All right, and if all goes according to plan, and assuming you want to get it done before the, by spring or springtime for the...
Yeah, we're not going to do it now, for sure, but we would, as early as possible.
Well, I don't know, it's 62 degrees, I'll...
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all favor the motion, which is to approve the Levy Park Cafe Building Roofing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.6 is Veterans Memorial Park Maintenance.
Move to approve the agreement.
Moved by Jerry, second by Michelle, questions or comments?
Just a question on this, you know, it talks about the agreement that has the company do the work at Veterans Park, and that's wonderful, and they've done a great job. Is there any input, or is there any work done by our Park Rec Department, other than, I mean, the Maintenance Department, other than a supervision or answering questions? Do they actually do some physical work on the park?
The park maintenance does not do a great deal of, of maintenance in that area. Most of it is done through the contractor. There's a lot of interaction that goes on, a lot of input, as far as the irrigation system, things like that, cleaning up the lot, those kind of things, but as far as actual grass and bushes and weeds, no, our, our staff does not do that.
Okay, because it, you know, this is a lot of money, I think, to the average person to spend, a well intentioned and a well deserving area, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're getting our dollars' worth, and I think we aren't having in the past.
Jerry?
Jim has done an outstanding job, and if you notice, there's no price increase.
And the city's better off to have a private contractor do this particular...
Yeah, we've been there. It's almost cheaper for us to have it done than it would be to get the equipment in the time it takes, and yet it's...
Okay, questions? Any other questions? Do you all favor the motion, which is to approve the Veterans Memorial Park Maintenance? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.7 is the parking agreement with MBM Logistics at 115 Patnau Drive.
I will move to approve the agreement.
Second.
Moved by George, second by Michelle, questions or comments? Keith, do you want to just run by this?
This is a local business that does a lot of trucking for other local businesses in town. They had another area of parking that they've lost, and they would like to use an area out at the airport, which is by the old technical school, that we don't use for anything at all. There is some talk about them in the future doing a building or facility, this, you know, that's you need here, and that's not at this spot. This would just be for trailers. The, there's no cost for electricity, they're not going to be using electricity or utilities. Part of the, the cost that we're charging them is our city crews do plow that area, will go through there and plow through their area as well.
Okay, Al?
Keith, could you answer the question in his cover letter? He refers in the second paragraph to meeting with Glenn, and I don't know if there's a reference to Glenn, I don't know who that is.
I'm sorry, Glenn is in charge of the maintenance of the airport.
Okay, he's a city employee, then?
He's a city employee, he's the one actually doing the plowing.
Okay, and then, how about the issue there, I know it's, you know, an area that really hasn't been used for a while, but do you anticipate any damage to the surface by having trucks parked there?
Don't anticipate it, it's covered in the agreement. If there was, they would have to cover the cost of bringing it back to the way it is now.
And, and you feel that any truck traffic movement around that area would be not a problem?
Couple of years ago, we had another agreement with a different company that did the same thing, and didn't see any, and it, it's been in place for so long, and the asphalt is not fresh or soft. I don't know what you could do to hurt it.
Okay, will it be storing any hazardous materials that you know?
Nothing can say about that, no.
Okay, that would be a concern I would have, but I think we can go ahead with this.
I don't know about...
It doesn't, oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I see Glenn is mentioned here, and I just want to put in a plug for Glenn, because everybody you talk to at the airport says that ever since he's taken over that job, it's been, you know, a real turnaround out there, so we appreciate that. And, and also, I want to thank George, George was kind of instrumental in getting everybody together on this thing here, so...
Well, I apologize for not knowing who Glenn was, then.
All right. George?
And he'll be parking all empty trailers there, so...
Oh, yeah, be empty, okay, thanks.
Okay, questions or comments? All favor the motion, which is to approve the parking agreement at 115 Drive. All favor that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 7.1 is reserved for council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with George.
Okay, you're talking about Third Street between Main and Johnson, that was part of probably the early Green Bay Packer pre-game parties. Anyway, but it was, I wasn't there, but it was a fun time, so... I don't have any birthdays or nothing else, so have a good evening.
Okay, Pam?
I have a concern, I'm not sure this is the right place for it, but I've been contacted by some students at Winona State who, who think that the lights on Broadway that allow them to cross Broadway at night are too dim, and I was, are too dim, in other words, they're too high up, and they, they don't have the wattage. They feel a little bit in jeopardy crossing the street like they're invisible. Going down Broadway, I find that it's really hard to see anybody crossing because of the oncoming lights. So, I don't know if that's been a problem, if there's been any incidents related to this, or if there's anything we could or should do, but students do use that a lot at night, and it's a concern for some of them.
We'll check with Excel and see what the wattage is on the lights. We do have a number of, variety of wattages on lights throughout the city, and we'll see if we can up some of the crossings.
Broadway's another street, too, that it's hard to see.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the one.
Okay, anything else, Pam?
No.
Keith, I keep thinking Debbie, Deb or Debbie, Debbie.
Whatever it was, thank you, Your Honor. I had asked, brought up to, a couple months ago, a few months ago, wanting to maybe get an update on our, we had contracted with McKinstry back in 2007 concerning, you know, carbon output, energy, environmental sustainability, and also working with Sustain Winona, we are a member of that, as well the city is. I know we've had kind of a change in hands for that position, but I was told at the time that a report was coming, actually, for this year, and I'm hoping that our Environmental Health and Safety Coordinator, that maybe we'll be able to get a brief update on that at our next council meeting this month. So, I know there was, in that plan, there was 2011 objectives and targets to be met by. I know Sustain Winona, they did get the ISO 1401 certification, that's the one goal that they did attain as well. It's an international environmental management standard, it's environmental management system that they looked at, and they actually developed that in June of 2009. But I know with McKinstry, we did, we did lighting, we're talking about lighting, and also in that plan, I know there's, we had proposed street lighting, that we, I don't think we got to that yet as well, but the library, central garage, City Hall here, a lot of the lighting, water usage, we've done work with that, electrical vending machines, for example, and a methane gas converter, all of those things, so savings and timeframe in the years, if we could have an update where we're at with that would be great, I think, if we could do that at our next meeting, I appreciate that, because it is the end of 2012. And I say happy Hanukkah to everyone, which is, what, December 9th, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I just want to congratulate the Finance Department, although they're gone. Thank you, Mary. And also, Chris and Judy and Carlos, I, I really appreciated that report, I thought it was really well done for the pre-meeting, it was very understandable and complete, and I know a lot of work went into it, and, and I really appreciated that. It actually clarified some of the, the things that we've been talking about, it made a little bit easier to understand and, and to get through, so, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Jerry, nothing, Al?
I, I am concerned, I know it's outside the first ward, but, but I'm concerned because I have a resident in the first ward who's a part of this, but I would ask that, we've had a couple of agreements for mobile food vendors in the downtown area, and apparently there is a little bit of difference between those mobile vendors and existing businesses that also serve food in the downtown, and I would ask those mobile vendors to perhaps respect the businesses of those permanent restaurants and other facilities in the downtown area. And happy Hanukkah, beginning of sundown on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Move to the consent agenda, there are four items. Item 8.1 is the approval of minutes from November 19th, 2012. Item 8.2 is ordinance to amend temporary liquor licenses. Item number 8.3 is ordinance to establish handicap parking on Lafayette Street, and item 8.4 is a claim against the city by Barbara Williams.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Could we pull 8-2 separate?
Okay. Approve the consent agenda without 8-2.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Michelle, all in favor of the consent less 8-2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, carry. All right, 8-2?
Item 8.2 is an ordinance to amend temporary liquor license.
Yeah, I, I've gotten a lot of questions on this, and contrary, some people think that they can get a license, but it's not for individuals, is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's right. The only change here, really, is going from 3.2 percent, which has already, already been an ordinance, to essentially strong beer.
And wine?
And allowing, and wine, and allowing a, a license for that, and so, no, an individual cannot get that.
It'd just be for nonprofits?
That's correct, it's nonprofits, there are a couple others, clubs, as defined in statute. Obviously, any temporary liquor license has to come before this body for approval as well.
When you say clubs, it does not include fraternities or anything like that, right?
No, I don't believe so, I don't have the statute in front of me, but there's a specific set of criteria in terms of how a club is defined for purposes of liquor license.
Now, I believe currently, we got Wholesinger Lodge you can have liquor in, and there's, I think, Prairie Island. And you can serve wine or liquor or whatever, as long as you don't charge for it, is that correct? Like, if I rent Wholesinger Lodge for reception or something, I can have liquor there as long as I'm not selling it?
That's right, you would need a permit.
I need a permit, right.
Yeah, so you would be renting the, the facility, and you would get a rental permit for that purpose.
Okay, now, what does a, a nonprofit do now if they want to serve, say they have an event at Wholesinger, and they want to serve wine and beer, and they want to charge for it, what do they do now?
I might be able to help answer that. Currently, if you were going to, if a nonprofit was going to do that, serve outside of 3.2, they would have to get a, an operation who has a catering license issued by the state of Minnesota to serve that program.
Okay, so they could still do it, but they'd have to pay somebody to do it.
Right, and there's...